All right, hereby called to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, November 7th, 2022. It's approximately 6:56 in the evening. The roll call will stand as previously called for the EDA meeting with all members present. The only change to the cast of characters here in the dais is that we have our city attorney, Mark Goggan, who has joined us to take place of the EDA attorney on my right at the end of the dais. Once again, our city manager, Pat Trujan, is on the left end, or my left end, and then we have various staff, department ads and guests who will participate in agenda items as they come up. We took care of the pledge allegiance at the EDA meeting, no need to repeat that for this meeting. Next then is consideration of the agenda for the council meeting. Are there any changes need to be made from a staff perspective?
There is not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do the council members have any changes that need to be made or items to remove from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
No.
All right. I don't see members of the public here that might be interested in removing consent items for separate consideration if by any chance there is somebody here from the public who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda for separate consideration. This would be the time to let us know if somebody is participating remotely, they can use the raise their hand feature in Zoom to let us know. This would be items in section 10 of the agenda, items 10A through F. Normally those are taken as a single motion with limited opportunity for comment or discussion, but we do want to provide an opportunity if members of the public wish to comment or ask a question about one of those items at this time in the meeting, we can have you let us know and we can take it up earlier rather than making it wait to the end. Do we have anyone for an item on the consent agenda this evening?
Nobody online.
All right, that appears to be an intact agenda then. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Any discussion? We've pretty well covered it, I think. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously and we have our agenda this evening. Next is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items that are not on tonight's agenda but may either be related to city business or of interest to people in the city. It doesn't appear that we have anybody in the council chambers for public comment on non-agenda items. I seem to have confirmation of that maybe from our lone attendee back in the corner. Anybody participating remotely, if you wish to speak on a non-agenda item, this is your opportunity to use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and let us know. Any sign of a hand being raised?
There's none.
I have a feeling we might have somebody here for a particular agenda item. With that then, we'll move on from general public comment and move to considering our business items. And right away, our first business item is item 7A, which is to consider adopting a ordinance related to THC products. And I'll turn it over to City Manager Trujan to introduce this item, which is coming back for formal consideration after an earlier discussion at prior council meeting. Mr. Trujan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mike. I'll just pull up just a quick PowerPoint that really just is reflective of the language in the ordinance, just so we can talk off that. So as you mentioned, we're here tonight to continue our discussion on the sale of THC products in Roseville at our last city council meeting. The city council did provide feedback on an ordinance that would regulate the retail sales of THC products. Specifically, the council asked to bring back an ordinance that addresses the following, and let me just walk through them. This is in the RCA as well. One was to only allow the retail sale of THC products in age-restricted establishments. Staff has included definition of the age-restricted establishment starting on line 81 of the ordinance. We further state in lines 123 and 124 that THC licenses will only be issued to age-restricted establishments. You will note that this models very closely the tobacco, age-restricted tobacco licenses, namely that persons of over, under 21 can, will need to be barred from entering the establishment at all times. Conspicuous written notice about the age restriction and then also meet the following building criteria. Shares no wall whether they're part of a structure or joining business unless the wall is permanent, completely opaque, and without doors and windows, pass-throughs, and there's inaccessible to a public only by an exterior door. So a very distinct business, not a kiosk and not something inside of another business. So hopefully that meets your thought on that. The next one was very clear that we did not want to allow any sampling, to be allowed for THC products, very similar to tobacco products, we don't allow for sampling. So this language is similar, so that is on line 246 of the draft ordinance and just basically says no person shall distribute samples of any licensed product free of charge or at anomalous cost, so pretty straightforward. The next item that you asked us to bring forward is regarding the fees. The actual ordinance itself does say the applicant will pay the appropriate license fee, which starts on 175. I would note later tonight, we have for the 2023 fee schedule, two fees in there relating to this. One is the application fee of $300, the other one's an investigatory fee for background checks, it's also $300. We did go back and take a look at what our processes were and our cost on this, and we feel that this $300 fee for each of those is adequate to cover our costs, similar to tobacco and off-sale liquor licenses. There's a variety of fees and different permutations of liquor licenses, but that is roughly in that same ballpark of what those were. So we refer to it here, but then also the specific numbers, because they may change over a period of time, are in the fee schedule, which is an ordinance you eventually adopted. So then, the last item that you specifically asked about was the violations and penalties and related to model the administrative penalties for non-compliance with anything in this proposed chapter 316. Starting on line 275 of the draft ordinance, we have modeled the penalties in this chapter to follow, the administrative penalties for both off-sale liquor licenses and tobacco sales, kind of the stepped approach regarding violations over a 36-month period, first, second, third violation, with a fourth violation within 36 months being revocation on that. Then we also mirrored the language that we can also charge a misdemeanor on, under this ordinance as well. There is also a fine for somebody that perhaps sells to an underage person, let's say, that would be an administrative penalty as well. So once again, very similar to what we have currently in the ordinance for tobacco and off-sale liquor. There is some additional language that we didn't talk about, but upon hearing some testimony and also being thoughtful about it, we did make some exceptions to the requirement and who needs to get a license. So specifically, this is on line 292. Under the language, medical providers that prescribe or sell THC products to their patients do not need to get a THC license from the city. In addition, wholesalers and manufacturers of THC products that sell products over the internet or mail also do not need to obtain a THC license. However, if any of those entities do want to sell to the public, kind of walk in public, they will need to meet all the requirements under the code and get a license. I think one barrier to that probably will be the age restriction of banning everybody under 21 to be in those places of businesses, but they could certainly comply if they were set up that way. There is one suggestion made prior to the meeting by Carol Moss, who's an attorney for the THC industry, who's testified here before, regarding just clarification on wholesalers and manufacturers and specifically business-to-business transactions. I think the intent was there that we would allow the wholesalers and manufacturers to do business and sell their products to other businesses in the community, including our retailers. So after some thought, I feel it's probably best just to add that language in there, clarifying. So that section B would read wholesalers and manufacturers of THC products that sell THC products over the internet and through business-to-business transactions or by mail, that they're accepted from getting the license. So we can certainly talk about that specific wording, but that's kind of the intent. As I said, that was certainly the intent of us, but we just didn't really say it out loud, so just to be crystal clear on that. Then finally, I will note that on line 172, staff has included a section regarding the total number of licenses that will be issued at any one time. I know there was some discussion at the last meeting about what that number should be. We had left it blank, so prior to you adopting any ordinance tonight, if you're so inclined to, you will need to have a conversation and put a number in there. We also have a ordinance summary, so if this is passed tonight, we will publish the ordinance summary that will need to be taken up by separate action. Otherwise, I will stop there and be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Great, thank you, Mr. Trujan. Are there any questions from councilmembers for staff on the proposed ordinance as it's been presented? Councilmember Willis.
The section B that you added under 316-10, defining in essence what wholesalers are, internet sales, et cetera, or manufacturers, should that also be spelled out in the definitional section? I don't know if that's a...
It certainly could. I mean, we don't have it currently in there. It's kind of a very generic term we're using, so you know, I guess the only way we would define it is specify that they would be selling or manufacturing or wholesaling THC products as defined in our state statutes. You may have a similar issue with medical providers, that was kept very broad for interpretation, but...
It's certainly not uncommon.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Sure. For ordinances to sort of define things within their text that aren't defined in the definitions to actually just related to that, since that was the question that was brought up. I think we have a little bit of a problem with B in that we talked about wholesalers and manufacturers, but certainly it is conceivable that somebody retails products over the internet only and they're not a wholesaler, because it's not business-to-business, and they're not a manufacturer, because they're not actually manufacturing their products. We may want to add that as a category somehow in that section as an online-only retailer or something to that effect, because I think what we're trying to do is license people who actually transact their business to customers in Roseville through a brick-and-mortar business, but I don't believe we're trying to license online retailers.
No.
I'd be curious to make sure that I'm not off-base from either our attorneys or our staff's perspective on that.
No, I don't believe so unless that's the intent of the council. I think it was more the in-person storefronts, you know, suggestion if we could just add, I mean, it gets a little lengthy, I understand, but add online retailers or add retailers that sell the product over the internet, just to make sure it's very clear. And then if they want to have a brick-and-mortar...
I think it would have to be exclusively over the internet.
Yeah.
We somehow want to say it that way so that clearly if they have any form of in-person retail sales in Roseville, they would have to have a license. Other questions or feedback for staff on the proposed ordinance at this point? All right. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to testify to the proposed ordinance as it's been presented and discussed to this point this evening, either here in the council chambers or participating remotely online? We'll just quickly go through the process for public testimony. If there is anyone who wishes to speak, we do have a three-minute time limit per speaker. We do ask that you first start by introducing yourself and either your organization, if that's who you're representing, or your either address or street name if you're a Roseville resident. And then if there is a speaker who's participating remotely and wishes to speak, just use that raise-your-hand feature in Zoom so that we know that and we can bring you in the meeting for your comments and certainly the same restrictions or rules would apply. The only other thing is that we ask that comments or questions be directed to the council and then as appropriate, we'll take those up as part of our discussion following any public comment. With that, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this proposed ordinance this evening? And we feel free to have a seat in front of either of the microphones to provide your testimony. Hello and welcome.
Thank you. Carol Moss, I'm an attorney at Hamilton Johnson and Dyna, and I appreciate the council giving me so many opportunities to address the issues. I don't have any particular, any additional issues to bring up. I have discussed my concern regarding the vagueness on the business-to-business, but I did want to just open myself up if there's any kind of questions about the industry or about the products that I might be able to answer for the council. So if there is, I'd be more than happy to answer or to provide feedback. If not, finally, a short attorney comment.
Well, thank you for that and for making yourself as available. It very well may be the case that we have questions as we get into our discussion too, and I think if that's appropriate at that time, we can certainly bring you back up for expertise to answer those types of questions.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you again for being here. Do we have anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? Anyone participating remotely, for instance?
There is no hand raised.
No hand raised?
Yep.
All right. Well, once again, thanks to everybody who has participated previously in this process and provided insight into the industry and the products and the regulations up to this point. We'll then close the opportunity for public comment at this time and move to council consideration. I would note the couple of items that we need to, as a council, look at, certainly the number of licenses. And then from my perspective, I think another question may be thinking about the definition of sort of that, that access via an exterior door and how that might fit if perhaps somebody has a storefront in one of our shopping centers that has an internal courtyard and the stores are off the internal courtyard, such as Rosedale or one of the others, and whether or not that exterior door requirement limits them from being able to have a age-restricted site under that definition, if we're concerned about that or not. I just wanted to raise the question because it came to my mind as I was looking at that as this was brought forward. But with that, I'll open it up to the council for thoughts, either on quantity of licenses or that matter or anything else that might be on councilmembers' minds. Councilmember Aden?
Mayor, for this item that the city manager's brought up here, you just brought up about doors going into things, did you have a suggested bit of language?
Well, I guess first of all, in terms of how staff or those who are enforcing this might interpret that, access to the public only by an exterior door tends to tell me that they could not have a site in a shopping mall that has a secondary door to get into the mall and then a door into their facility. I guess I'll ask Mr. Goggan if he's got thoughts.
Mayor, councilman, my only thought is, it's my understanding that the policy behind this is to have an actual storefront to make monitoring easier on staff, noting that I think all of the shopping malls in Roseville have portions that have storefronts that are exterior. So it strikes me that that would strike a good balance between the policy behind having a storefront requirement, but allowing those sites to have potentially these sorts of retailers. A large portion of, say, Rosedale has storefronts that go, that have only exterior doors.
Correct.
So when operated as an exclusionary requirement.
Sure. And I wonder if a way to do that, to potentially allow it where they don't have to be exterior access doors, is to simply say is accessible to the public only by a door or an operable door or whatever the adjective you want to have there is, because I could see somebody then having a storefront in a mall, internal to the mall, but they still only have access through a controlled door and so they have the ability like they would with an exterior access to be able to monitor who comes in. And it's not like a wide-open storefront like you typically see in a mall where anybody can walk in any part of that opening and it's kind of, you know, Katy bar the door, so to speak. I don't know, councilor, Mr. Goggan?
Mayor, council, I think the intention of this sort of policy is to not have a back-room business, and that's the purpose behind having an exterior door requirement, is that you don't want in the back of a gas station, in the back of wherever, to have those sorts of back-room stores. And then it becomes very cumbersome to come up with a definition to get around that and it can get pretty convoluted pretty quickly.
Sure, and I'm completely okay with the language as it is. I just wanted to make sure we had the conversation in case there was a concern on the part of the council as to how that might, how that might work and/or a concern on the part of staff as to how to enforce it. Councilmember Willis?
I think the way I would look upon it, for example, Rosedale, and you're entering into the mall, which is really a common area, not unlike a common area of a condominium, if you will, right? Or a common area as you step out of a exterior or open mall concept, you're still stepping out into that common area. So I guess I probably don't share the same concern that you're putting forward.
All right, so I guess just to understand, are you saying that under the current definition, you think somebody could conceivably have a storefront in Rosedale, for instance, as long as it had a door?
Yep.
To the common area?
Yeah.
That, that would be your interpretation?
Yeah.
And I guess then the question is, is that how it would be enforced, in fact, by those who are tasked with enforcing it, or do we need to be more specific? Councilmember Grogg?
Usually I would think of it as that is a common space, as Councilmember Willis was saying, and the actual rented space is the part that's within their store. So I think most of us think of it that way. Now, your question about how enforcement would be is a different one, and we have to be sure it's clear enough, because in 10 years or 15 years, a lot of us won't be here and maybe some of the staff that are currently here won't be here, and we have to have it clear enough that other people would understand it and be able to enforce it.
I suppose one way to avoid the back-room kind of concept is to say accessible from a public space via a door, because a public, I don't know, depending on, once again, you get into that whole thing about is the, is the shopping area of a convenience store a public space from which then you can have a door into a back room? I think, you know, perhaps if we're, if this just gets us, as the attorney said, into too much complication, we may just want to leave it at that.
Well, then defining a door.
Right, well, I don't want, I don't want to get into it. A door is a door. Mr. Goggan?
I don't, Mayor, because I don't mean to get too involved in this, but if a shopping mall is some, an area that the council wishes to be permitted, then you could certainly be specific with that language. You could say, on line 89, you could simply put, right now it says is accessible by the public only by an exterior door, period. Then you could insert, "An entrance to common areas of shopping malls shall constitute an exterior door."
Oh, there you go. If we're, if that's where we want to be, that would, that would accomplish that. Councilmember Aden?
I appreciate that language and would support it. You mentioned the door would not just be an open door. Do we, are we specifying the door must be closed?
It's not a doorway, it's a door, and to me, a door is an operable thing that closes, right?
But in most malls, that's not true.
Well, then they're going to have to put one in if they want to have a store in a mall. It's the way I would interpret it.
Then you might need to define that, too.
Also, we don't like restricted malls with openings.
Well, certainly. I mean, I think the question is, do we, I mean, do we, how restrictive do we want to be in this, I think is the only question. So right now, it appears to be fairly restrictive in the sense that you can't have something in a shopping center that doesn't have exterior access immediately from the storefronts. They will ponder that for a little while, because we have a couple of other things we have to think about, which is certainly the number of licenses. And just for reference, to the extent that it's relevant to the conversation, I believe we have currently 12 liquor store licenses available and/or occupied.
Ten, ten.
Is it 10? I thought at one point it went up to 12, but...
No, we talked about it.
Okay, all right. And then, thank you for clarifying that, and then the four, if I'm right on that, on the dedicated, age-restricted tobacco stores. It just, I'll throw my perspective out there, just to see what happens, is that this, these products seem a whole lot less like tobacco to me than like alcohol. In fact, I'm not even sure they're as bad for the health of individuals as potentially alcohol even is. That doesn't mean I think we should have 20 licenses, but perhaps that 10 is a starting point number to think about. And I'll turn it over to the council for thoughts. I mean, we've got to come to some number, unless we want to leave it blank.
I would think the 10 sounds like a logical one. It can always be reviewed, you know, if we find that there are no problems with this and so, or we could, it could be restricted in a way. I mean, and once we have 10, though, I guess it'd be hard to reduce them unless there was someone who's going out of business.
We do have a process that we're looking at to potentially reduce massage therapy licenses, so there is something that can be done potentially. Councilmember Aden?
I would be comfortable with 10.
Other discussion on that portion of it or contrary points, councilmembers?
I'd like to go back to our, well, I'm no more than 10 at this point. I'd be on, I wouldn't mind erring on the side of something less as we, as Attorney Goggan has mentioned, it is quite likely that we'll see a significant alteration or amendment as we approach the next session. So I don't know that, I don't want to create too many different layers of things, and I, I think that 10 max is a good point. But I want to, as we go back to this exterior door piece and thinking of how it is approached by a, our tobacco stores and by our liquor stores, which are also age-restricted to 21. To my knowledge, we're not allowed to have a liquor store in a mall unless it is age-restricted, so. Do you have more information?
Well, I'm not sure. It's a specific restriction, but they have to meet the regulations governing, meaning a separate entrance. So you'll often see Target or grocery stores have a separate entrance into the liquor store that's different and walled off than, than the rest of the grocery store. So to the extent that a mall would do that and space would be available, we're going to make exterior entrance somehow, although I would note that oftentimes you use the same entrance. You have your right to go in the liquor store, straight into the Target.
I would just be more comfortable with the consistency between those items rather than create a different definition for this purpose only, especially since we do not know what the length or breadth of the whole thing will be a year from now, given the state legislature.
And I think for liquor stores, the exterior, the separate access point is actually part of the state law in relation to those. I don't believe that's necessarily part of our code.
No, no.
But certainly for tobacco, age-restricted tobacco, we do have the same language about accessible only through an exterior door. All right, other, was there anyone else who wanted to weigh in on the quantity and but differently from the 10 or no more than 10? All right, we may have that settled. I don't know that there were any other issues that were raised or questions that people had, but certainly if councilmembers do have, this is the opportunity to discuss those as part of this consideration this evening. Otherwise, we may be approaching the point of some sort of motion. Actually, did we already do public comment? We did public comment, honestly. I just want to be sure. All right, do we have a motion from the council as relates to this proposed ordinance related to THC products, sales, retail sales licensing?
I'll make a motion for eight establishments with an exterior door servicing, such as our tobacco establishments.
So no change to that language?
No, no change. Yes, no change.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'd second it.
All right, it's been seconded by Councilmember Groff. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Strawn?
Just always easier to add than to take away. And this way, our enforcement and other folks can give us an indication of where things are at, and we can always add two more in a couple of months even, and once we see how it all works.
All right, other discussion, the motion, Councilmember Groff? No? Other council discussion? Councilmember Willis?
Can you refresh the language that you had on the doors?
So right now, the motion is to...
Just as it is.
Yes, it is, right.
But what was the alternative that you had suggested?
It would simply be in addition to the exterior door requirement, which would state, "An entrance to common areas of shopping malls shall constitute an exterior door."
Do we have to say for purposes of this, this section of the code or anything?
No, because it is within that subsection here.
Would the maker and seconder of the motion be able to amend that?
Not at this time.
Right, that can be also made as a motion to amend. Councilmember Aden?
I'm going to support this resolution as it is, wearing up this motion.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in support of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our, it's not resolutions, it's an ordinance, actually. So the quantity is eight, no change to the definitions related to age-restricted establishment. And I think the intent of the motion was to include the language that we discussed earlier about the business-to-business as well as the addition related to the online-only retail.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to clarify, yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Trujan, Councilmember Willis?
I would like to go ahead and move the ordinance summary, attachment B.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Willis. All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Wilmes, seconded by Councilmember Edden to approve the summary. You know, I forgot to discuss my discussion points on the previous ordinance, so maybe you'll indulge me. The only thing I wanted to say is that I, I agree that, you know, the difference between eight and 10 isn't that significant, and honestly, the exterior door thing may not prove to be an obstacle. Once again, I just wanted to make sure we have the conversation about that. That being said, we've got the motion before us to adopt the ordinance summary. Once again, this requires a super majority by state law, which in this case is four votes. Given that the previous vote was five to zero, I don't anticipate that'll be a problem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously, five to zero, meeting the super majority requirement. All right, thank you, everyone. Thanks once again to everybody participating in this process up to this point, and we look forward to the opportunity to put this into effect and see how things go. With that, then, we've got the next item on our business items this evening is item 7B, which is consideration of proposed changes to the 2023 fee schedule. And I believe this is Mr. Trudgeon for this item.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in your packet, and I would mention first, this is our first look at it here. We're not looking for any approval here tonight. We'll wait till December 5th, our last meeting of the year. Certainly an opportunity to ask questions and bring back additional information if you would like. So I'm going to focus right now on attachment A within the packet, which identifies the changes from the current fee schedule, just to expedite the conversation. So first on this list here is a new fee for applications, late fee. Oftentimes, especially this time of year with liquor licenses, we have things that pop up at the last second here, and we have to scramble to get them on an agenda. So we want to make sure that people are aware of those deadlines, which they are, but if they do come in late, we will charge a $50 fee to process that so we can accommodate staff time that's not planned for. We'd also add a new fee for the THC license of $300. We also have a THC, I'm not seeing it on here, maybe it's down a little bit further, about the investigatory fee of $300 for the background checks. Moving on here, we are adding the compliance failures for THC sales. Those are new, we just, we're talking about them, they mirror the tobacco and off sale liquor fines. Moving on to community development, these are mostly just incremental increases relating to costs of our time and staff time here, so you'll see some go up $6. There's one parking lot repair that goes down, actually. Once again, we always are looking at our fees to make sure they're commensurate with our actual staff time on there, so in this case, that would go down. For the electrical permit fees, these have gone up. If you recall, we did renew the electrical inspector's contract, and this is reflective of those additional costs on there. Once again, apartment buildings, these are all electrical permit fees, I guess, so they all went up incrementally. The commercial fees are now based on valuation. For fire, there are a couple incremental changes for CPR training, daycare inspection fees, and commercial vent hood inspections and fire safety training, just once again to reflect real staff costs, as well as a minor adjustment in the reinspection fee for the rental licensing. Two new ones that are added is a fire and EMS assistance fee. We do not have anything like this currently in our fee schedule. This is, for instances, when there is request by an ambulance company to be available when they are transporting somebody back from the hospital or the clinic to their place of residence. We are finding that they are calling us more to be there just to help assist in moving people in. This is not something that is, can be expected or an emergency, certainly. It is something scheduled on their end, and they call us. So we would like to be able to charge the ambulance company for that service if we're coming out. As you remember with the lift assistance conversation a couple of years ago, we want to make sure that if people or businesses specifically are using our services for, to help them, we want to make sure we're covering our costs. This only happens a few times a year, so it's not a great big impact, but it's something that we want to get on the books. Similarly, the next one required, requested fire inspections consultation. We do have businesses occasionally, for insurance purposes, need a request, we go out and inspect their places so they can report back to their insurance company that they're a safe place and they're meeting all the fire issues. And it happens rarely, four or five times a year, according to Chief Rosnahan, and so we like to have a fee on there in case those instances, when that happens. So, brand new fees, they don't happen a lot, but they do happen enough that we want to make sure that we are covering our costs for those. Under the fire department, again, just some minor changes for plan review fees, going to Public Works, the fats, oils, and grease, as you know, we have an ordinance on the books here to really help our system so it doesn't get clogged up with those type of materials. And I think we want to really look at enforcement stronger. You can imagine a blockage in a pipe with these things, and if proper measures aren't taken by the business, it can cause quite a lot of damage and a lot of work on our end. So we're looking to raise the fine, I guess you would call it, from 500 to 1,000 for a blockage. Also, really important, it's making sure that they maintain the records of what they have in place and the procedures that they're doing. And so we like to raise that from 100 to 250. I'm not aware that we have a lot of violators out there, but when we do, it can be, you know, fairly significant events. We want to make sure that we have appropriate measures in place to make sure that the fine is equal to the amount of impact that they caused. We also are looking under Public Works for some patching fees to raise that. That's really reflective of the material costs that have gone up and labor costs. Same with private hydrant inspection, well, not the same, but charge changing to per hydrant fee regardless of the number of hydrants. So I might need some help from Mr. Freyhammer on this, if you have any questions. But we are looking per hydrant that we would inspect that. This is private on property, like a shopping center, you know, on the parking lot. Speed patching fee, once again, going up somewhat due to material costs. The wireless support structure, currently, we really don't have a fee. We just say it's going to be negotiated, and what we're talking about is the cell towers that are currently almost, I think exclusively on city property in one way or another. So we are looking to kind of restructure our fees, our fees there. One, we would have for a support structure fee of $1,000 to cover staff costs as we receive it and do some preliminary investigation and review of it. The escrow fee is what we would collect for them to be doing work on there to modify the existing arrangement, whether to put some more, more equipment on the tower and to modify that, or to have something brand new. We would have an $8,000 escrow for modifying the existing structure. That's an escrow that we collect, and we have a private company currently, SEH, that does all the technical review on us. So we would draw from that escrow for any cost of third party. Anything left on that would be returned to the applicant. So for the new equipment, we would say $10,000 because that's a little bit more significant work. So, once again, really defining what our fees would be in cases like that. This doesn't happen a lot, but when it does happen, it does take a significant amount of our time. For the engineering, for the plan review fees, just some modest increases here to reflect some actual costs here. You can see mostly $5 increases. Same with the erosion control permit renewal, going up a little bit more because of more time and more regulations to take into account. And then looking to, for any driveway permits, for an expansion of a residential driveway, among the other fees, add another $25 engineering fee, so our engineers can be compensated for the work they look at for storm control and erosion control. We did remove some, as we do not make these connections. They've been kind of stuck in the fee schedule for a while, the sewer connection fee, the utility service connection fee, and water connection fee. The last one I want to mention, and this was not shown on attachment A, but it's shown on attachment B, is certification of delinquent utility bill service charges. We cannot find any precedent in our fee schedule that we have any delinquent fee on there. We have currently charged for many years, and can't figure out where it came from, $2 for a delinquent fee. So we would like to raise that to $25. We have some habitual folks that don't pay on time. Hopefully, we'll get the message. And it does take, obviously, a lot of time for us to follow on track and do things. So, not seen in the previous fee schedule. This is new, and it'd be $25. So with that, that's a really quick summary. We have some folks here that can answer questions, and certainly if you have any questions, I can bring back them at the future meeting when we can discuss it.
Questions, Councilmember Strong?
I know the couple discrepancies, just to clarify. I see the per hydrant fee at $75 in one location and at 70 in another. So just, they appear to be the same thing.
One's Public Works and one is Fire Department, I think.
It's just private hydrant inspection, Public Works, yep. And the other is private general.
Were you looking at the fee schedule itself?
Yep.
Yep, I think she's correct. And then the page numbers here, but...
Yeah. The other thing I was, yeah, mine is page 23, but you guys don't know page numbers. And the other thing was fireworks use, possession, sale is 250 under administrative fines, but then there's a fee for fireworks sales, retail, 100. So it was a little unclear who was getting charged what, and so I wasn't sure if those were consistent.
The fireworks sale is, you know, for the folks that sell fireworks in tents and retailers.
Yeah, it says retail, existing retail, so it'd probably be like Target, I mean, or Walmart, I don't know.
Well, anyone who sells fireworks at retail would have to have a license from the...
Yeah, so, so Target standing would be like a store, and then the standalone temporary ones that would be tents. The first one you referenced, can't see it here, but that's probably administrative fines, somebody shooting off fireworks illegally that our police department can set them.
Okay, it says fireworks use, possession, or sale.
So that'd be probably if somebody was selling without a license, for instance, or that sort of thing.
Correct, that's for possession of an unlawful firework.
Do we ever tag anyone on that? Doesn't really seem like it, having a dog with PTSD. It doesn't seem like that happens too often. And then the other thing, I didn't see where...
Have it on the books, I guess.
Yeah, curious about the hotel nuisance fee? Where that is?
Well, I know for sure it's in the ordinance. I'm not sure we listed here. It's just $250 for each news call over.
Right.
Something we could certainly add to the fee schedule just to...
I think, actually, I think it's later on in that administrative fines. Commercial lodging establishment, property nuisance. So I answered it myself, sorry.
Thank you. A lot of stuff here.
Other, is that all? Okay. Other questions from councilmembers? I did have a couple of things on the, the wireless tower structure, the wireless structure. Is that really sort of a lease application fee? Is that what we're talking about there? So if somebody comes to the city and wants to lease space to have wireless facility on a tower, that, that's what that $1,000 is covering, is this sort of the application for that, that license or that lease, I should say? Or is there something? Because we've got the $8,000 and $10,000, obviously, for the additional look at the equipment. Mr. Frey.
Yeah, so, so we do have individual lease agreements with multiple companies. This is really more for the equipment. So if they're, we have an existing lease, certainly them applying, basically applying for the permit to put it up in our review time related more to the permitting. I don't think we have...
But separate from the escrow?
Correct, correct. So, because we have our staff time to administer that permit as well and do all the coordination with our consultant. So there is a fair amount of staff time involved with that, and we've just historically, I think, done them individually as they come through the lease agreement.
I just want to make sure we, I guess it's under Public Works, but it might be helpful to clarify exactly what that is, maybe with the wording of what the, what the fee is for. That would be my only comment. I don't, don't question the fee necessarily. And then on the, the connection fees that we're getting rid of, is that because we're not actually doing the work of making the connection that's being done by private contractors?
Correct.
That are being paid directly by the...
Correct. We pulled that out of the ordinance three or four years ago, and we just didn't pull it out of the fee schedule.
Got it, okay. Once again, just wanted to clarify that, because if there was something we had to administratively do for them to have a connection with the city, then I wanted to make sure we weren't not covering that.
Correct. We still have our, we still have permit fees to do the inspection.
Got it, okay. Thank you, appreciate that. I think that was the, oh, and I was going to just note that the investigatory fee related to the THC is actually in the fee schedule, so even though it wasn't highlighted as one of the new ones. Great, anything else from councilmembers? Otherwise, this item will be back before the council as part of our general financial matters consideration at our meeting in December. And certainly, if folks have questions in the meantime, follow up. And not seeing anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this? All right. Then, that will bring us to our consideration of the 2023 utility rates, and we did have this item before us in a manner as relates to the study, otherwise done by Ellers, but this is the more detailed and comprehensive presentation of this, and we have our finance director, Michelle Pietrak, with us this evening to bring this to the council.
Good evening. Some of this is going to be a repeat because we did have the utility rate study presented in October, but as a recap, the water fund, we are recommending an 8% increase, and that is primarily driven by the 9% increase in St. Paul regional water costs charged to us. Storm drainage, we are recommending a 33% increase to deal with the large capital needs that are coming in the near term. While that percentage sounds high, it equates to about $5 per quarter for residential properties. In the sanitary sewer fund, we are proposing a 2% increase, which will cover the increased costs from Metropolitan Council. The recycling operations, this is the first meeting that we're discussing recycling, and there was a calculation worksheet in your packet, and this is based on data from the Public Works Department.
We have the overhead camera, please. I think if you hold it still there, they can focus it in.
Okay.
Otherwise, we have technical assistance from Mr. Trudgeon.
Thank you. I know numbers, not technology.
It's part of his job description. Go ahead.
All right. So this is the second year of the new contract with our provider. So those costs are shown under the contractor costs section up in the left-hand corner. Public Works did factor in some additional minimal charges for the cart purchase. As you recall, last year, we discussed that. So based on the costs in the upper left, the revenues as proposed, we will have about $44,000 that will be built in for the cart purchases. So that's the recycling fund. And altogether, what this means for a single-family home, including the usage fees, the base fees for water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and the recycling fund, we are looking at approximately $13.61 per quarter increase based on the average water consumption of a, it says a thousand, but that's 12,000 gallons per quarter, and an average sewer consumption of 11,000 gallons per quarter. The two are different because it factors in the winter averaging, which reduces the sewer consumption. And on a month... it factors in the winter averaging, um, which reduces the sewer consumption. And on a monthly basis, that's slightly under five dollars per month increase for all of those utilities. So at this point, um, we are looking for any feedback that the council has. Um, the rates will be um on the December fifth um agenda with all the other financial items, including the budget.
All right. Ms. Petrick, thank you. Um, just a clarification on the water fund. You had said a nine percent increase. Is that an increase to the usage fees or to the base fee or both?
The nine percent is the increase that we're being charged by.
I'm sorry.
St. Paul Regional Water, and we have an eight percent increase.
And so that's on the usage fees?
And on the base.
And on the base fee. Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify, because it wasn't completely clear to me. Thank you. Other questions from council members? Uh, Councilmember Ratten?
Does that water increase reflect any reduction based on the council's decision around recovering the undercharged accounts from twenty twenty-one and twenty-two?
It does not for next year, for the twenty-three rates, because again, water is really driven by that increase in St. Paul Regional Water. Um, we've been analyzing the recovery. We should be able to reduce future years, we are hoping. But that's based again on how much St. Paul increases the water charges to us.
With my understanding from our our previous things, that there was an amount put in there to help with the recovery of dollars that would not have happened if we did not take the action we did last meeting. So somehow, it seemed like there was an amount, an extra amount budgeted in there for the twenty twenty-three rates that we would not need unless we're identifying a different need between these two meetings.
What was factored in the utility rate study was the top ten commercial accounts, assuming that we would recover them in one lump sum. What the council decided was to offer the option of spreading the costs over four quarters. So the underbilling primarily will not be received until the end of twenty twenty-three, as the majority of residential and commercial will be spread out over four quarters. So that's why we didn't make an adjustment to the rates for twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Oh, Councilmember Strawn.
I haven't had a question, opportunity to ask this before. Can you um share what the differences or how one qualifies to be part of this low-income discount on the sewer? And it doesn't look like there's an equivalent on the water base rate. So can you just clarify that a little bit?
Um, it's, there used to be on the water, but when we did the utility rate study two years ago, the consumption rates were set below the discounted rate, which is why on the water, we didn't have the discounted rate. Um, it's based on um residents receiving assistance through other governmental entities. So it's based on income. And our website details out um what those qualifications are.
So they have to opt in? They have to reach out, make that?
Yeah.
And then can you just clarify the Maplewood sewer accounts and the difference in costs? What that means?
Um, we have some accounts that are hooked up to um our water, but they're on Maplewood Sewer or vice versa. Um, and so we also have, I'm trying to remember if we have any left that aren't hooked up to our water at all. Um, but basically, um, for this, Maplewood gives us the rates to charge. So that's where our water residents are hooked up to their sewer. If that makes sense.
I'm just looking at the disparity in costs. I'm wondering why there's such a big difference between them, because they appear to both be about sewer. So single-family residential is forty-three ninety-eight in twenty twenty-three, and Maplewood sewer count in sewer for twenty twenty-three is nineteen sixty-four, so less than double.
I can get more information.
Okay.
I I would venture to guess that it probably means that Maplewood recovers their um infrastructure costs differently. They don't do it through their base fees, most likely. But that, they probably recover it another way, right?
Yeah.
Right? Um, or they deem that the their their customer or their customers in Roseville aren't really part of the system per se, so they don't have to pay. I don't know. But anyway, we can certainly follow up on that.
Yes, I'll get more information.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one thing on the uh reduced sewer base fee um opportunity. The city is not, we don't have our own application program, and people don't demonstrate any of their qualifications to the city. It's all through just showing that they are receiving benefits through another entity so that we don't have to go through and have our staff do all those checks and things like that.
That is correct.
Which was very intentional on the part of the city when we set that up.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Once again, we'll look forward to this item coming back on the first meeting in December. Um, and I appreciate the clarification about the the water rates and how that relates to our discussion last time with Ellers about recovery of the underbilling. It that makes sense when you think about the fact that it's going to be collected over time, that we want to make sure we're not, we're not putting ourselves in a deeper hole over the course of this next.
Right.
All right, thank you. All right. With that, then, we have our next item on the agenda, uh, their business items, item seven D, which is to consider declaring Juneteenth as a city holiday. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you are aware, on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, President Biden signed legislation declaring June fifteenth as a federal holiday in acknowledgement of Juneteenth Day. Uh, as you know, Juneteenth Day celebrates or commemorates uh June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, when Union soldiers brought news of freedom to the enslaved black people in Galveston, Texas. Uh, on Juneteenth Day now, uh, since twenty twenty-one, federal offices are closed, many banks are being clo- are closed, as well as no U.S. mail. The state of Minnesota has not yet declared Juneteenth as a holiday, uh, although there seems to be some movement to do so. That has not officially happened. So as a result, many local governments in Minnesota have declared Juneteenth Day as a local holiday. Uh, we were able to find about ten um that have done it already. St. Paul, Minneapolis, Bloomington, Brooklyn Center, Richfield, Lindstrom, Duluth, Cottage Grove, and Edina, as well as Ramsey County, Hennepin County, Olmsted County, as the entire county, uh, St. Paul School District and Minneapolis School District do it as well. And we understand, uh, St. Louis Park and Hopkins will be doing in twenty-three. And that's what we've been able to find. There's a lot of cities. I know New Brighton's talking about it as well. Uh, as you know, we have uh at least eight percent of our population that identify as black, another six point six as two races. It's important to state that is uh the recognition of Juneteenth Day is not merely an opportunity to celebrate a milestone event in black history. It's an opportunity to recognize critical turning point in American history. Um, e- even though it's been celebrated for a long time, uh, it's not been recognized by federal, state, or local governments until just recently. The legacy and trauma of slavery continue to directly impact black individuals in the black community. The federal government, states including Minnesota, local governments including Roseville, had a direct hand for maintaining uh and for many years for maintaining laws, policies, and programs and systems that directly discriminate against black, indigenous, and persons of color. As you know, we are on our, our, we're, we are on our own uh journey here in regard to equity work with the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan. Uh, so declaring Juneteenth uh as a city holiday will provide an opportunity for the community, city employees, and policymakers to reflect on the legacy of slavery, as well as strengthen their commitment to eliminate the continuing systemic inequities on government and society. Then I would just note that um declaring Juneteenth as a city holiday is certainly consistent with at least two of our community aspirations, being welcoming, inclusive, and respectful, and being engaged in our community's success as citizens, neighbors, volunteers, leaders, and businesspeople. In regards to cost, I have I have some detail there, but uh declaring Juneteenth as a city holiday, be like any other city holiday, city offices would be closed, uh, meaning City Hall and um the License Center in particular. Obviously, emergency services would continue throughout that holiday. Since we already budget uh for uh employees to be paid on that day, uh, there would not be a huge staff increase in costs. The only ones would be the public service, um, public safety, I should say, um, members. We do have this negotiated in most of our union contracts. Uh, and oftentimes, it's going to be an additional bank of ours they would put in, so there'd be no direct cost. But for anybody that's working directly on um on um on Juneteenth Day, let's say, like in the police department, there would be some overtime costs, not overtime, time and a half cost that would be incurred. All told, I think it's very, very minimal, about two thousand dollars. So really not a big um expenditure on the city side. I would note that uh there was certainly some loss of revenue with the License Center being closed one additional day. Um, that's not forever gone. That's, it's a different day. Uh, they would come back, they would probably lose some, just because people need something that particular day. I think as more and more agencies are are closed, it's not going to be a factor. We also have very minimal offsetting costs for less fuel and other equipment uh or material goods on that day, but that's pretty minimal and really hard to calculate. So having said all that, um, I do recommend that the uh City Council consider approving the resolution in the packet, declaring Juneteenth as a special city holiday, and that City Hall and other city facilities would be closed, as well as no official uh city business be conducted for meetings and commissions on that day as well. So with that, I'll pause and uh see if there's any questions.
Any questions from the council for staff? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? Do we have any remote participants anymore on the?
The person left, but let's see here. Yep.
No longer, no longer. All right. Uh, it appears no one uh in the public wishes to speak to this item at this time. Uh, council, we are being asked to approve the resolution attached uh in the packet, uh, setting up uh Juneteenth as a city holiday as outlined. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Ratten, second by Councilmember Strawn, to author, uh, adopt that resolution for Juneteenth. Uh, discussion on the motion, as the maker, Councilmember Eppen.
Appreciate staff bringing this idea forward. Uh, it's important to note, it's not just recognition of this singular event, but kind of the larger piece of our history as a collective country.
Okay. Uh, as the second of the motion, Councilmember Strawn?
I, I thank you for bringing this forward, and I think it's an extension of the work that we partnered with this summer to to hold the Juneteenth event. That was very successful, and I hope it's a sign of our continued commitment to showing that um as a collective organization and a a community, this is an important piece of our history that we need to be aware of and and use to build upon for the future.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Uh, Councilmember Graff?
I would just add that this is an opportunity for an educational moment. Uh, it's amazing to me that this went on for so many years and how much of the population doesn't even realize what Juneteenth was about. And so I hope that that, of course, as we did last year, could be wrapped into that and a little more awareness for the community.
All right. Well said. Uh, if there's no further discussion on the motion, all those in favors of the motion adopting that resolution, declaring that city holiday, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. And that holiday is added. Uh, finally, under business items, we have seven E, which is to consider adopting the twenty twenty-three City Council and EDA authority meeting calendar. Uh, and once again, just a note on the proposed uh dates, they're on April, July, and October, I think it is. Those are uh the third or last meeting date of the council in each of those months is off to the side rather than underneath the other dates. And so we just want to make sure that folks are completely aware of those dates. Certainly for official publication, we'll make sure and get that uh straightened out.
All right.
Actually, on this one, it looks like it is straightened out already. Great.
No, July twenty-fourth is off.
Yeah.
And April twenty-fourth is over on the side.
I was getting kind of hopeful. We were getting more efficient. Don't know why.
We're almost completely fixed on this one. All right. That being said, we have the proposed uh schedule. I don't know that there's anything more you wanted to say by way of uh introduction, Mr. Trudgeon?
Uh, no, uh, just a couple of points. I would uh note that um based on the previous action, um, we would typically have a meeting on June nineteenth, Monday, uh, this year, the way the calendar falls. So we are saying that the meeting will be held on a Tuesday night, June twentieth. So it'll be a little bit different uh for the council to meet on that night, but we do not have a conflict. So I just want to note that. Also, we did add uh on here the dates of the commission interviews, so we can, that's more in our forethought uh here, so March seventh and eighth, and then uh September nineteenth and twentieth. Otherwise, we've pretty much followed the pattern we've had the last few year, few years at least regarding meeting pace and um a little bit less in the summer, and certainly this one meeting in December and limited meetings in November. So uh just wanted to call that out.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there any questions uh on this item from council?
Can we expect that Councilmember Willis is unavailable?
Do you have conflicts?
That's something really, really weird.
Write in, write in.
I'd like to mo- make a motion to.
Actually, just before, I do have a question. Have we in the past um had a meeting date scheduled in the midst of the school districts' um spring breaks?
Yes.
I was trying to think about that, because it seems like we get a gap somewhere in there, but maybe it's it's at the beginning or end of February, beginning of March, or at the end of March. Must be where I've been thinking that those gaps were.
Beginning of February, yeah.
They don't often, do they?
But it has been scheduled before during this.
Last year, they have it rarely.
Okay. I just wanted to double-check on that. I couldn't couldn't recall if, and when I knew there was some kind of gap in there that we had. All right. With that, Councilmember Strawn, your motion?
Motion to accept the calendar as presented.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Strawn, second by Councilmember Graff. Thank you for your indulgence on that question. Um, to adopt the calendar as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That calendar is adopted. And next, we have a consideration of uh two city council meeting minutes, one from October seventeenth and one from October twenty-fourth. Um, we can certainly take them up as a single motion, or if there are uh members who are absent who wish to abstain from either one or both of those minutes, we can uh provide for separate motions. Uh, Councilmember Eppen?
Mayor, I would like to separate those, because I was, I had a concert on October seventeenth. I would like to note, though, that I had a ghost appearance in the roll call on line fifty of the October seventeenth meeting and apparently voted. So we should strike my name from then.
Despite being listed as absent earlier in the minutes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay.
So we should just correct that little thing. I was like, wow, he was there. I didn't remember being there.
You want to make a motion regarding that?
I was super confused.
Well, I guess you weren't there, so I guess.
No, I'm not going to make a motion.
Somebody should be.
I'll make a motion to um correct the minutes and to otherwise accept them.
For the seventeenth.
For the seventeenth of October.
So Councilmember Strawn moves. Councilmember Willis seconds. Uh, any discussion on that motion? Uh, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions?
One, me.
All right, that passes four to zero with uh Councilmember Ratten abstaining. And that brings us to our October twenty-fourth meeting minutes. Is there a motion on those?
So moved.
Approval.
Moved by Councilmember Graff.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ratten. Uh, any discussion, any phantom votes on that one that we need to, I didn't see. You know, I may have to look more closely at those votes. Um, or just depend on Councilmember Ratten to catch them. Uh, do we have any needed abstentions on that particular meeting? All right. Uh, all those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye, this is for the twenty-fourth.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Councilwoman Willis abstains. It passes unanimously four to zero with that abstention. That brings us to the consent agenda, items A through F, unless anybody wants to take the eight o'clock break at this time. No? All right, we'll move right to the consent agenda. Mr. Trudgeon, would you go through those items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, agenda item ten A approves payments the amount of one million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, twenty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. Item ten B receives the city grant app applications update. To date in twenty twenty-two, the city has received five hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars in grants. Item ten C approves final payment for the County Road B water main improvement. Uh, agenda item ten D certifies unpaid utility and other charges to the property tax rolls. Payments along with interest received by the city by December ninth will not be levied to the twenty twenty-three property taxes. Item ten E approves a grant agreement with the city of St. Paul for the towards zero deaths program to cover police officer overtime to conduct uh traffic safety enforcement. Roseville will receive thirty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars in grant funds. Then finally, item ten F will approve renewal of the Ramsey County Violent Crimes Enforcement Team, or VSAT, joint powers agreement with the six other law enforcement agencies. Roseville has been part of the uh part of the VSAT since two thousand and five. And that is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion?
Yep.
Just, I forgot to ask it earlier, but on the certification of the delinquent amounts, if somebody is charged an administrative fee related to enforcement of a particular, say, nuisance code enforcement, is that something that gets up?
Yep, that's the intent, so that's the count of all the other fees.
It's not just utility fees, okay. I just wanted to be sure about that. Thank you for indulging that question. We have the motion before us to approve the consent agenda items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously, those items are approved or received. Finally, or second to final, the future agenda review, communications, reports, announcements. Mr. Trudgeon on the future agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on here is November sixteenth, we are intending to hold special city council meeting to canvass general election results. We may have a challenge with the quorum on that particular day, so we will have to set a special meeting date, so I will be in contact with everybody and see what would be appropriate. We do need to have that canvassing meeting at some point during the week, and that would just be a single item meeting, so disregard that specific information. Our next formal scheduled meeting is November twenty-eighth. We have an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the 2023 budget and tax levy. We'll also be holding a public hearing for liquor licenses renewals. We want to bring forward initial discussion about Nomo May. The Public Works Commission just recently had a conversation, have some thoughts on that. We also have a condition to use for additional density at fourteen fifteen County Road B, that was the planning commission last week. We are looking to award the city attorney contracts. We also have a minor plat, which is, my understanding is just basically a lot split, at twenty-eight sixty-seven Dale Street. And on top of all that, we want to try to have a beginning of discussion about our legislative priorities for next year. Then our final meeting of the year, recognition of any outgoing council members, have the final approval of the twenty-three budget and city levy, the EDA levy, utility rates, and fee schedules. I anticipate we'll have continued discussions, but legislative priorities, also authorize new positions as part of the 2023 budget, take that formal action. And as of right now, I have massage therapy changes, I've been kind of moving that around depending on our balance of items, but December fifteenth is the best fit. So that's what we have now scheduled for future meetings.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there questions on the future agenda as presented this evening? Are there any council member-initiated items for future meetings? Any liaison reports from council members? All right. By way of announcements, folks may know, maybe have heard that tomorrow's election day in our nation, as well as here in our community and our state, and certainly encourage everybody who hasn't already voted to get out and vote and exercise your right and responsibility as a citizen to participate in your government. If there's no other announcements, the only other, oh.
I would just note that some people in Roseville precincts have been redistricted, so if you have not paid attention until now, make sure you check your polling place before you leave the house.
Right, oh. All right, and then Councilwoman Willis.
To adjourn.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Willis, seconded by Councilmember Ratten to adjourn. No discussion on a motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at eight oh nine P.M. Thank you.